You're good.
This is the April tenth, two thousand and twenty four meeting of the Akushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped and we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda today is the secretary's report from March sixth. Does anyone have any clarifications or additions to those minutes? Any questions?
I do want to make a motion to accept it.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to the next item, we have the budget.
So we are in the last quarter of the fiscal year. There is slightly a change in the children's room assistant line. Our children's librarian left. She's no longer working here. So that line will remain stagnant for a little bit. I'm hoping to fill in gaps in the schedule with other staff who are available. And second, longevity. Our tech one, who's been here for five years, received a longevity payment this past pay period. We have our energy line, which is a big one, and we are, we still have three months left and we are doing pretty good with that. And then in the building and grounds line, I'll explain a little bit further when I give an update on the septic tank, but I had to use four dollars and fifty seven cents from that to, for the replacement pipes leading from the building to the septic tank. Any questions on the budget?
Nope, I don't have anything. Does anyone else have anything?
No.
Nope. Alright, motion please.
Motion, do so.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Old business. An update regarding replacing the pipes leading into the septic.
So our pipes were replaced. Fantastic work by the DPW. Our last meeting, we approved two thousand dollars to use from the stock gift fund. So that's why the four dollars and fifty seven cents was taken out of building and grounds.
I'll break it.
So there was three invoices for three separate materials. Don't ask me what is what. And so just a quick timeline, they came in Friday, March eighth. They did the right side of the building. They dug up the ground, removed the pipes, put in new pipes. So we could not use this side of the bathroom, uh, this side of the building for the bathroom and the kitchen. After that, they came back on Monday, March eleventh, did the left side of the building. Same process, traffic was able to flow freely. And what was completed that day was the entire pipe system on that side. And they also created traps. So there's a trap that is on the outside of the building in the event of a clog. They don't have to go from inside, they can just go from the ground to the septic tank. And I didn't know there was also a trap on this side. But I am Dave from the, uh, Dan from the DPW will be giving me an updated blueprint of the pipes, the layout of the pipes. And there's also drainage that comes down from the gutters. There's multiple pipes that go out, so we'll have both on it. Because the one I had was outdated. So the pipes that were installed were PVC pipes. They were much bigger. The ones that were there were original to the building. They were made out of clay. They were really cool, but they were probably like four inches in diameter. So when they dug up the ground, there was dirt in the pipes. And there was already, I saw it with my own eyes, there was already a clog forming. So yeah, it was, it was pretty, pretty interesting to see. But they were in and out super fast. And then on Friday, March fifteenth, the DPW came again, paved it and tidied up the, the grounds and put a grass seed on it. And since then, we, it's been completely fine. So knock on wood, it was done, they were in and out super fast, fantastic work. And we were just slightly over the amount that was.
Not bad enough.
Excellent.
Yes. So, and I will, when I get those blueprints, I will share it with everyone.
Excellent.
And that's the update for the septic tank.
Hopefully that will take care of that matter for a long time.
Yes, yes. Yes.
That's good. Anybody have any, any questions?
No.
You did have? Okay.
Cross that one off the list.
Right, exactly. On to the next thing. An update regarding the portico.
I talked to Seth DeRoche over at the Roche Brothers in the last couple of days. We were playing telephone tag trying to line up the schedule where he'd come out here and look at everything and then give me an idea of when, how much I guess to an extent.
Okay.
So I talked to Elizabeth and she's gracious enough to allow me to take Seth downstairs, see what we got, and he'll go from there. So I was waiting for, hoping he was gonna call me this morning. I'm gonna give him a call after the meeting and prod and walk. I don't, busy time here for them too.
Yeah.
But he said he wanted to get out here and look at it, so.
Okay.
I suspect that he'll be here sooner than later.
Okay. And then so hopefully we can have some sort, like some sort of a estimate or plan by the next meeting and then
I hope so, yeah.
he can, because we'll have to.
Hopefully this week, told me he's coming this week.
Yes.
So I'll give him a call, just a gentle reminder.
And then, because we'll have to vote on that, right? If it's, if it, if it ends up costing.
More than the four thousand.
Yes, because we already have the, right?
That was very good.
We already have that money already all set. So if that's all, if it's within that, then we're good. But if it's not within that, then we would have to wait till the next meeting. But if it's within that amount, then full steam ahead.
I thought, well, my idea was that I'd bring it back to everyone if a vote needed to be taken. If it doesn't, then.
So we, we already appropriated the, I mean, we already voted to have the funds set aside to do that.
Okay.
So that's all set. It's just a matter of someone else is now doing it, which is, which is fine. So you should have the, the total that we have left, right, to spend?
I do, I just don't have.
Yeah, and that's, I don't have it in front of me there. So it was, we set aside a certain amount and then he's already, Jim had already spent money on materials
Yes.
and stuff like that. So if we subtract that, whatever's left, we've already got that A okay. So if, if it falls within that.
Yeah.
Full steam ahead, go right ahead and we can do that. And then we'll just update at the next meeting.
Good enough.
If it's gonna, if the estimate's gonna end up being over.
Yeah.
Then we would have to come back before we start and then, because we would have to put it, try to put aside, to vote, to put aside one.
So as soon as I, I'll let everyone know and I'll keep everybody appraised at the situation.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, good enough.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on that? That'd be, got a good one to cross off the list.
We're going on here.
I know, it's crazy. Okay, next is the FY twenty five budget.
So at the last board of selectmen meeting with the town administrator, there was discussion of our budget. I met with the town administrator previously, March seventh, about removing the utility, the energy line from the FY twenty five budget. So at the meeting, it was presented that we were in A and B. So A budget was with the utility in and then the B budget was with the utility removed. So when I met with the town administrator about removing it, he understands that we have to meet MAR. So he wanted me to put in seven thousand dollars into the other line so that way we could meet MAR with the energy removed. Right now, it's a big discussion there of what's actually going to happen and what the board of selectmen are going to approve. And what I, I made an error with is that our energy line, also the water gets taken out. So we cannot remove completely the energy line because our water, we pay quarterly. Roughly, it's four hundred dollars a year. So that energy line still needs to remain with four hundred dollars if the town. So with the, it's now on video. What the town is trying to do is to block the energy from all the other buildings into some grouping. Don't know much about it, but it was discussed in executive session during their last meeting. So with that being said, I, we, we still don't know which budget they're going to approve, but both budgets do meet the MAR. The one with the energy line removed obviously is very close to the MAR. And I'm just waiting on when they meet again to see what they decide or if there's any other talk of this energy package that they're trying to, to, to get. They could try to get a better rate for the entire town buildings. And the meeting kind of just ended with them. So I, I don't know what was discussed afterwards.
And I think the whole, the whole thing is right now with, they're, obviously they're trying to save the town money. So by taking all the energies and grouping it all together, they're hoping to get a better rate, which is great. Except we here at the library have that MAR we need to meet. So as, as I was looking through this and, and you know, discussions that I had, trying to understand it, it, it's, it makes sense to take the energy line out of the budget. However, then they need to give us seven thousand dollars to meet the MAR. So are we really saving any money really? Because unless you're saving, unless by grouping everyone together, we're saving over seven thousand dollars, it's, it's not worth it. So there was discussions that they were gonna, they might think about trying to group everyone else together and leaving the library over here just alone. Because at least for now, maybe when the, the financial situation in the town gets better, maybe then they'll be like, well, yeah, we'll group you in and then give you the money to meet the MAR. But for right now, it might make sense to them just to leave it alone. I mean, it would have to be a significant savings in order for them to group it all together to save money and then give us seven thousand dollars anyway.
I don't suspect the library uses that much energy.
Believe it or not, we actually do because it's the only source of energy that we use. And there's, I didn't think so either, but it came out. The library doesn't use gas, oil, or propane. It only uses electric. So it's all through the, through the.
Even the heat and stuff?
Even the heat, the air conditioning, the walkway, everything is electric. So our, our, the budget line that we have of the, of the thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars, only four hundred of that is actually water rounded, right? The rest of it is, so it's almost, you know, it's pretty close to thirteen thousand dollars in electric. So I can understand, you know, the savings.
So if we don't go in the group, what does that do to our rate remains? Does it go up? Oh, it's going up, we know that it's going up.
Correct.
Do you have any idea?
Um, it, it went up from, what did it go up from?
Nine to seventeen.
Seventeen, nine, nine.
Nine to seventeen.
Kilowatt, nine cents per kilowatt, whatever it is, to.
Of course, I don't have any of this one. It was almost double.
Double. Does it go up more than if we had gone in the group? Otherwise.
I don't know because the, the, the.
I don't, yeah, I don't know. It was all hush, hush.
Right, the, the details of the group, they're still negotiating and trying to figure out what they were gonna do, if, if they were able to do anything. I mean, maybe, you know, if you get in a group thing, maybe, maybe it'll save, you know, two cents a kilowatt. I, I don't even know what that even translates to. But.
Okay.
The bottom line for us is if they take out that energy line, leaving the four hundred dollars for water, if they take out like roughly like twelve thousand five hundred, they would still need to pay us seven thousand. So really, you're only, you're not taking that much from us because you have to give it to us. So we're not gonna be paying for it for energy, but we're just gonna put it somewhere else because we still have to meet that MAR.
You gotta meet the MAR, yeah.
So I, I just think that it might not make sense. I mean, it makes sense from the standpoint that the library probably uses more electric than anywhere else in the town. That makes sense, but it doesn't make sense in the fact that we would have to use the MAR. So we're gonna take this twelve five, but we're gonna give you seven back.
Do we use heat pumps for, for, well, heat and cooling?
It's the, it's the, the split, just split is, yep.
Maybe that, yeah.
They have many supply heads.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, everything is electric in here.
Yep.
But I, I will say that the next three months are our lowest usage months. But.
And that's probably because you're between, right? Heat and air conditioning, so it's not too hot, but it's not too cold, so it's.
Exactly. So, yes. Yep.
So then, and we don't have to worry about the walkway.
Nope.
So that ends up working out.
So.
So stay tuned for that.
Yes.
Hopefully, well, it needs to be solved pretty soon because that, the, it has to go to print.
Then it. Mm-hmm. I think the same day.
I think it was May first, I think, or the second.
I mean, I really, I'm appreciative that they understand that the MAR, we need to meet the MAR. But we'll, we'll see what, what is decided and, you know.
Absolutely. Alright, we have new business. The idea of adding a self-serve kiosk used for town business.
So I received a phone call from the town administrator about an idea. This is very, very new, very, very fresh. An idea of adding a self-service kiosk in the library. You know, we are open Monday through Saturday. We are open till seven thirty, Monday through Thursday, Friday till five, Saturday till two thirty. So we have hours outside of what normal town hall is open. So what this kiosk is, is a self-service kiosk where you can pay your utility bills or any type of transaction that you would do at town hall. He is not, he's currently looking at vendors. I couldn't give you a picture of what it looks like. I'm assuming it looks like an ATM. I don't have much information. It's just an idea. And then I wanted to bring it to the board to see if they had any questions that I could ask the town administrator if this does come about. The things that are on my mind about it is library staff will not man it. We can't, we, it's, it's not, it's not our responsibility. The other thing is space. How big is this? We don't have much space here. Where would this thing go? What happens if it needs to be troubleshooted? Those are some of the questions that I had regarding this idea. I think it's fantastic that, you know, not everyone works in nine to five or, or they work in nine to five, but town hall closes. So if they want to pay some bill, they could do it at, at the library. Costs, I, I, I wouldn't, we would not pay for it. I don't think it's, you know, it would be funded through the library at all. That's the other thing on it. But I just wanna open the floor here to see if anyone had any thoughts about it so that when I do get a call about this, I can bring it up to see if it's something that we would want here.
My initial thought is, who is the audience that we're targeting with this kiosk? Because I know that I pay all of my bills online from my computer, so from my house.
Okay.
So, and it's, it's, it's on, it's on our website. So it's, it's not anything that would necessarily need a kiosk for. You just need a computer. So are we just targeting those people that don't have a computer, that can't get to town hall between the hours of nine and five? Or are we talking about paying bills other than what you can pay online? I know you can pay water, excise tax. I don't know what else you can pay.
Well, our, our computers in a sense are kiosks.
Well, that's what I was thinking. So, but what, we wouldn't need to add anything else if you, if you wanna come in, you, but you can do that now.
I think this handles checks. I don't know if it handles money, but I think it handles checks. I, it's still very young. I don't even, he hasn't even, he was looking at vendors. I couldn't read a name, so I could read about it.
You know, regardless of whether we have, we won't have staff assigned to it, but people don't have, that don't get their answers are gonna be looking to sell our stuff.
Yes, of course, of course.
And then if we don't help them, we can't help them, it's a little bit of a negative. But I see the benefit to the town and to the townspeople. I don't know how big that audience is, but.
Right, I don't, I don't know how big that audience is either. Like, hey, you can get there nine to five, go to town hall, you can pay your bill, but.
I mean, it's like the big thing would be like the weekend because Saturday, you know, no one's opening on Saturday except the library.
They have a drop-off box in front of the town hall.
Yes, they do have a drop-off box.
I suspect it would have a limited appeal.
Yeah.
Okay, is it done anywhere around here? Never heard of this.
I Googled it to see if I could find another place and I couldn't. I couldn't find any of that, but.
I mean, I think we, we, I mean, we can't, obviously, we couldn't vote on it anyways with the information.
No, 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 there's nothing to vote. It was just.
But I would think that we would probably need more information before we would even consider
Okay.
even thinking about it.
Okay.
And then what, like you said, what's the target audience? How many people are actually going to town hall to pay the bill now that can't get there? That aren't mailing it or paying it on the computer themselves or dropping it in the, in the drop box? I mean, because it's obviously, they're all getting paid now. Somehow.
Somehow.
You would think. Okay. Well, anybody else have anything on that? No? Okay.
Should we continue?
We've continued. Second area of new business. Massachusetts Education and Government Association, which is MEGA.
So during that same phone call regarding the kiosk with the town administrator, this, this MEGA, I'm still a little puzzled on it. So it was presented to me as a company that will come into town buildings and see if there's anything that is a safety hazard. So what was said was that it would, if there was something that was not safe or a hazard to workers here, that you could apply for grants or funds with this report from this company. That was the information I was given. I went on their webpage to see if I could find out more about it. I don't know if it's something that is needed here. We don't have a hazardous, we don't work in a hazardous environment. I, 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 I don't feel safe, say, I don't feel comfortable saying that I understand this completely. I would definitely need more information about it. But the town administrator wanted me to present it at our next meeting. And I wanted to once again open the floor to ask if anyone has, what, what questions I should ask more about aside from what benefit, like is there a cost? Are we paying for it? Is this the town doing it? I believe that other buildings are, but I don't know which ones. So I, I would, to me, it seems like it's just, it looks good if you're applying for something like a grant to put ADA compliant something or another because this report is like official through this company. So I, I wanna open the, the floor if anyone wants to add more questions to it. Just let me know, please.
Anyone have any thoughts?
Does anyone come into this building now looking for issues? Or is it just the staff, what you see?
I, I've had patrons who've mentioned things to me, but it's.
I mean, more like the government, like anything.
A government, no, no. We do have our fire, the southeastern fire, I think, fire safety, they're on Alder Road. They come in, do our fire extinguishers, they check everything. But they're not like official government, but no.
Okay.
No, we do not.
I, I remember hearing about it on the selectmen's meeting. I think they were talking about MEGA. And I do remember them saying that they had, it was a couple of different town buildings that they were talking about. When I heard it, it seemed to me like it was more of a, you know how you can do, they have the programs do like mass save? Like the people come in and they'll tell you, oh, hey, you could, it would be more beneficial to have insulation here and better windows here. It sounded to me when I heard it that that's what this was. Like, hey, we're gonna come in and we're gonna be like, hey, jeez, you shouldn't have that there. You shouldn't, and then report back to you and then from there. But it didn't sound like it was something that we were paying for. It sounded like it, it itself was already either a grant or it was already kind of in the works. But that's my interpretation of what it, what it was.
Okay.
I mean, if it's something like that and somebody wants to come in and look around and be like, I mean, why not? And then.
Yeah, right.
I mean, and then they come in and they say, hey, jeez, you know, that.
No expense.
And it's free and no obligation.
Yeah, right.
Correct, exactly.
Yeah, maybe it's just.
And then.
Just added to this and like.
Right, and then, and then maybe, like you said, if, if they find something, then maybe we look, oh, jeez, that's, that's a pretty good idea. Maybe we'll think about that and then maybe there are grants that, so.
I do know we do need an automatic door, an A/ E compliant door. So that would be, if it, if it's, if this is something that this company does, so. I know prior to my arrival, the bathrooms, it had pipe installations to, with people, if you're on it, like on a wheelchair, you don't burn yourself. But I don't know who discovered that.
Right.
So maybe there are things that we're, we're just not aware of.
Right. I mean, I would say, you know, where, if it's part of the thing and we're not paying for it.
Okay. So we are.
I mean, I would say, first of all, you know, is there a cost and what's the purpose?
Open to that. Yes. Yes, yes. Okay.
And then.
So we are open to this.
Yeah, and, and just see what, yeah.
Okay.
We're open to the discussion, I would think. And then if you come back with more info.
Okay. Okay.
And then.
And like, once again, this is also still really very early, early stages.
Alright, moving on to the director's report.
Alright, where should I start? So the last meeting, the February statistics weren't in yet. So I just want to just quickly go over. So the one I really wanna talk about is March. So March, we have seen our highest circulation for adult and children since last September. So we're, we're coming out from the winter, the, the slow season. And then this, this past week and a half have been pretty wild here with the solar clips. So we're probably gonna see a good, hopefully see a, a rise in the statistics for April. But other than that, our statistics are pretty much the same. And the people counter, I believe next month will be very, very high. Last Friday, we were only, we're only open four hours on Friday. And due to the solar clips glasses, we had a hundred and forty people come in looking for these glasses. It was, it was, it was pretty, pretty wild. So the other news that I want to report is our children's librarian has taken another job. She left. So this past Saturday was her last day. We are grateful for her time here, although short. We wish her well at her new position. So regarding that vacant position, I immediately posted the job in-house per the union contract. So it was posted in-house for a week. And then after a week, I reached out to the town. So the town graciously put it on their webpage and on their social media. I also posted it on LinkedIn, which I haven't done before. It was also added to the sales weekly newsletter, the sales website, the Massachusetts Library Board of Commission's website, library job line through Simmons and listservs for the entire state for MasAC and all regions. So as of today, I have nine applicants have applied, so looking up for this. And I hope to start interviewing in May. The next item on my report is I did attend two PTO meetings. The one was at the Kushnet Elementary School on March eleventh. And then another one which was new to us was that the PTO was, for the elementary school, met at the library. So I stayed, stood over here and we, I discussed the library, how to get a library card, some events that were happening. So that was exciting to, to be in our environment for the PTO meeting. Um, so that was exciting to, to be in our environment for the PTO meeting. And, um, another issue, uh, not an issue, but, um, this, I, so. I updated the public computers on March twenty-second and installed a remote program that George uses from sales to troubleshoot, um, our computers. Unfortunately, computer number two, um, would not, it would, would not boot, it would just keep going in the cycle. So George had to remove computer number two and he's working on it. Um. The issue that we do have right now is our public printer broke. So our printer that is connected to the public computers, our fax machine and our copier, uh, scanner, um, it died on us. It gave us the message, we believe the printer is from two thousand eleven, and it, it was, it was wonderful. So, um, what I had George do is he s, used, uh, the remote program that was installed. And he switched over the other printer that we have to the public computers. So the public are, they're still able to print, it's just we don't have fax services. So I reached out to the town admin, uh, town administrator's office, cause we do have one printer that is with a contract with Core Business Technology. Um, and I reached out to the town to see if I could look into purchasing a printer through them. Um, they told me, yes, I can look into it, so I have, I've been speaking to Core Business Technology. I have, we have an idea of the printer that we want, um. We are just waiting on a response. I'm, I'm just waiting on a response from them. So the, you know, I could have ordered a printer through W V Mason, um, but that would just be the printer, we had no support with it. This printer that, uh, that I'm looking at is a heavier printer, heavy, heavy duty usage printer. Uh, it duplexes, cause ours didn't, um, it does everything the same, fax, copy, scans, um, it's a higher vol, uh, voltage capacity. Um, and troubleshooting, uh, the ink and everything would be done through this contract that the town has. Um. But the printer is a little bit more money than the one that was on W V Mason. So it is a table, a desktop printer, so it would fit on a regular table. Um, but when I get more word from them, um, I will let everyone know. Um, so unfortunately, our, we do get a lot of fax inquiries, so unfortunately, we just, we have a nice little handout, a staff member created. That we give options that there are other places to fax, uh, for example, Minuteman Press on the avenue right across from Holiday Bakery. Um, they, uh, have faxing services there. Um. So, uh, so starting April first, we were handing out solar eclipse glasses, uh, we were, we had about, uh, over, maybe a little bit over four hundred and fifty glasses to give out. Um, we gave them out throughout the week, Friday, we ran out, and then Saturday, we received some more. Um, Monday, uh, literally, an hour before the eclipse, the school department gave us a call to let us, uh, want us to, if we wanted, um, glasses. So they had about, it was about seventy glasses, and what they failed to tell me was that they let the school know, the student, uh, the, I think it was Ford. Um, so we had a parade of cars just going, building, and they went so fast, they were, they were going so fast. I posted on social media, they posted on social media, so word got around really, really fast. Uh, but it's, it's, there was a lot of people in here, a lot of energy, uh, from the solar eclipse glasses, I hope that energy continues. Uh, to please come in here, we, we also have a lot more than, than solar eclipse glasses.
We'll let you give them out next week.
Uh. So it was a lot of new faces, so that was, it was, it was pretty wild in the, we'll have to wait twenty years to have a, another event like this. Um, this just happened this morning, I just wanted to mention it, um, so. We had a discussion when, when our children's librarian was here, every week, every year, we do host a little people's college, they come in in the morning. And they pre, uh, the prior week before, they hang their artwork for the week of the children. And, um, so I did my first storytime ever, cause I promised, and unfortunately, our children's librarian left, so I had to do storytime today, and I will say I enjoyed it.
Go ahead.
Um, so that was exciting to see, and I, a lot of them have been here, so I was really happy to hear that. Um. On town items, um. So that list I had presented last meeting, I, uh, gave it to the town administrator and, and the town administrator gave it to Dave. Um, so there, he was here the other day just cleaning the flower beds, just ever so, you know, nothing extreme or anything. He had a student with him from Old Colony, um, so the other thing, uh, on Friday, Dave was also here to talk about painting. So, um, they're looking for interior, what stuff to do interior, so our white of our building, of our door frames need to be redone. But hallway that's behind us needs to be done, there's gaps in the wall. Um, so we were, last time I spoke today, we were gonna discuss the paint, I know there's some paint downstairs, we're going to see if it has the labels still on it. Uh, so that way we can get a match and have, um, the white primed and, and the hallway redone. Um, there was something else, just to mention, there was an odd smell in the break room. Um, so we, staff thought maybe something had unfortunately passed away in the walls, or the ceiling, or the floor. Um, so I had Dave come in and look in the ceiling, he popped a tile, there was nothing there. So, I, it's just some.
No, no patrons.
Right, so it's just something to mention in case it does happen again, because it was foul, we don't know what it was. Hopefully, the people men, staff would mention that it smelled like a dead mouse. I don't know, I don't know what dead animals smell like, but the smell went away. So, it was there for about a week and a half, and then it just, we came in and it was gone. Uh, there was also mentioning maybe, cause the earth was dug up, those pipes were dug up, that maybe some smell was still somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
But it didn't, there was, we looked downstairs at our piping, there was no smell downstairs, there was nothing leaking there. We toured about that kitchen underneath the, underneath the sink to see if there was anything, absolutely nothing. So, I just wanted to make a note of that, in the event that we have a weird smell again, we have to, uh. Uh, I'll need more ideas to figure out what, where it's coming from.
Right.
Um, so that's my, uh, report, um, I do have a couple of announcements. Um, because we don't have a children's room, unfortunately, our Wednesday ten-thirty storytime is on a hiatus. Um, we do have this month, again, we do have Pace with their Mindful Melodies. And that is on four eleven and four eighteen at two, uh, I'm sorry, at, at eleven. Um, you can sign up online for that event. Um, next Tuesday, uh, during school vacation, we have a midday movie, uh, Disney's Wish will be showing at two. And then for Earth Day, on Monday, April twenty-second, we will have a drop-in seed craft. Where you're creating, uh, with toilet paper rolls, you're putting seed, seeds in, um, so that we, you can take it home and, and plant it. Um, that's it for the report and announcements, anyone have any questions about it?
Sounds like you've been busy.
Yes, it's been a very, it was a very busy, 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 busy month, and, um. And totally gonna get busy, cause the summer has come anyway, we, we have been planning, uh, for summer since January, uh. Summer contests have been even planned bef, uh, since twenty twenty-three, so we will have a packed summer. I am looking into programming because we will, um, you know, we're, because of the lack of the children's room librarian, so. Uh, we, we have, uh, a good summer in store for us, so. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Do you have any idea when you expect to hire a new children's librarian?
If I, I'm hoping before July. I, it all depends on where, where they coming from, whoever I hire, what they're, you know, if they have to give a two, a notice, they have to give a notice, or, you know, it just, it just depends on that. So I'm hoping July, um, unfortunately, I'm not here in the next two weeks, so I can't do much, I'm just collecting applications and cover letters. Um, but, yeah, hoping. It could be sooner, maybe, could be later, but.
Anybody have any other questions? Okay. Uh, let's see, our next meeting is Wednesday, May eighth at twelve thirty. Is everyone good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Phone, yeah, I forgot my phone, I think I'm okay.
That's like an appendage.
I know. Yeah.
If it's not okay, let me know, okay.
I'll check it off.
Jerry, does that work for you?
Yeah.
John, does that work for you?
I know, it's good.
Alright, so our next meeting is Wednesday, May eighth, is that good for you?
It's good, it, it might be short.
No, that's okay, yeah, that's fine. So Wednesday, May eighth at twelve thirty.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
If we are all set.
Motion closed, yeah, seconded.
Alright. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Hi. This April tenth meeting of the Akrishna Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned, it is one fifteen, thank you.